Good evening and welcome to the August 8th. We're gonna call our meeting to order at this time. At this time, if you're so inclined, please feel free to rise with us as we do the invocation. And then we'll have the pledge led by Chief Branca.
Father above, we're thankful for this opportunity to come together to take care of the business of the city we love. We just ask that your blessings would be upon this meeting, that wisdom would be given. We pray that the words that would be spoken would be pleasing to you. We ask of protection upon all those who are offered protection to our families, to our city, to our first responders, our public safety. Everyone who brings value to the lives of our city. We thank you for those who work for the city and represent us so well. And ask that your protection would be upon them. In your name we pray, amen. Chief, good evening.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go over our guidelines for our meetings at this time. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearing, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue. They may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. At this time, I'd like to recognize our mayor pro tem, Councilman Walts, for additions and deletions to the agenda. Councilman?
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We have no additions or deletions tonight.
Okay. So that's a motion as for the agenda as presented?
Yep.
All right. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. The minutes were distributed to council before our minute, before our meeting for their review. At this time, I would ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
I so moved.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. We now move to item number two on our agenda, presentations. And we have one item, a proclamation designating August 8th, 2022 as Pet Welfare Day in Aiken. And I'll recognize our city manager at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We do have this designation. The, our friends at Stableview Farms inquired about supplying to be a Better Cities for Pets designation, pet-friendly city. And we were officially designated a pet-friendly city last year. This Better City for Pets program helps cities be pet-friendly so more people can enjoy the benefits of life with pets. It was created by Mars Pet Care and includes a playbook for cities, as well as an assessment tool, a city certification program, and free online resources. Because we're a city with a high frequency of pet ownership, with a large number of public parks, trails, green spaces, and other items welcoming for pets. As well as our support of the ASPCA's Trap, Neuter, and Release Program and pet-friendly nature of our historic downtown. This proclamation is an opportunity for us to promote animal well-being and celebrate this designation and reaffirm our commitment to pets.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beedenbow. I believe our mayor pro tem has the proclamation.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, would you like, would someone mind reading that into the record for us?
No, I was gonna sign it.
Okay.
You sure?
Yeah.
This is a proclamation. Was certifying pet-friendly city by Better Cities for Pets. The proclamation reads, whereas August of 2022 marks the one-year anniversary of the city of Aiken being certified as a pet-friendly city by Better Cities for Pets. And whereas pets are part of more than 8,000 families in our city. And whereas pets make life better by giving people love, giving people companionship and comfort, getting us outside for exercise, and helping us build social connections. And whereas responsible pet ownership is vital to the well-being of pets and people. And whereas pets must be protected from harm and have the care and nutrition they need. And whereas animal workers and advocates in our community work tirelessly to keep pets healthy and safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Aiken recognizes the efforts of those in our community who work tirelessly to create a safe and welcoming environment for pets and animals by volunteering, adopting, making their business pet-welcome. And be it further resolved that the city of Aiken, along with community partners and citizens, recognizes the need to continue to celebrate, continue to enjoy and protect pets throughout our community. Now therefore, I, Rick Osborn, mayor, and the city of, city council of the city of Aiken, do hereby proclaim August 8th, 2022, as Pet Welfare Day in Aiken, South Carolina. Signed by the mayor and city council.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. At this time, I'd like to take a motion for this proclamation from council.
I so moved.
Councilman Walts made the motion. Councilwoman Broll made the second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And of course, that's unanimous. Councilwoman, would you like to go down with me and let's present that? I believe we have some members from Stableview here, as well as Barbara Nielsen with our Aiken SPCA. I think Barry Olaf is here, Kenna Black, and Alyssa Lumley is here, right? So if y'all guys would meet us down at the podium?
Don't be so scared, it's more hurt.
Say something, great idea. You should say something, start with this, go for it.
Good evening. I won't take five minutes. I guess that at Stableview, we thought that after winning the small-town accolade in 2018, we thought, what are we gonna do in 2019, 2021, when we come fifth, or 10th, or 20th? And we came across this, you could say, opportunity to consider some type of new way of continuing to raise the profile of Aiken, not just for the eventing fraternity that we represent, but more importantly for Aiken per se. And our belief is that if correctly marketed, this is a huge opportunity for Aiken to encourage retirees, youngsters, families, shops, banks, all sorts of people who we would consider our neighbors, to raise the profile of pets and to effectively turn that around and say, well, if you're supportive of pets, then why not come to Aiken because we are a user-friendly city? So that was the origin of the suggestion. We're great, we're very happy that it's, it's arrived. And we would like to do whatever we can to support anybody who's interested in continuing marketing and even continuing education with regard to this. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for bringing the initiative to us. Obviously, our, our animals and our pets are family to many of us. So it's a great initiative and I think very representative of our city. So, Councilwoman has a proclamation, we'd love to present it this time?
Want to turn around?
Yep. And we can get a photo?
Sure.
That's a big deal.
Is that one more?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We really do appreciate it.
That's Jordan, good.
Moving down the agenda to old business, this is a discussion of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And I'll recognize our city manager, Mr. Beedenbow.
Thank you. We have no appointments for council consideration this evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I do want to point out that we did receive since our last meeting, a letter of resignation from John Horvath of our housing authority. That gives us two vacancies on the housing authority. I know the director, Ms. Shanasha Lawton, contacted me just to remind me of that, so I am passing that on. Also, since our last meeting, we have gotten, and the election commission has three members appointed for six-year terms. We have received since our last meeting, and I'm planting this seed, several, two resignations. Ms. Karen Potite is moving out of state. And Mr. John Lindsay is resigning due to health reasons. So we've gotten those in writing. So two of our three vacancies on the election commission exist since our last meeting. That is important because unlike other boards which are appointed, I guess each council member has a, an agreement where each, there's seven or more appointees. So everyone has an appointee. There's just three appointments for this, for the election commission. So I wanted to point that out to council. And we may have another one. I hadn't received anything in writing yet, but it's possible we could have a third resignation just due to, due to health as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Beedenbow. With that, at this time, I'd ask council if there's any names to be considered for boards and commissions at our next meeting? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to reappoint Angela Fleming to the Community Development Committee.
Okay. Ms. Fleming's name will be considered at our next meeting. Any others? Thank you. Moving down to new business, item number one, this is a first ring of an ordinance to rezonate property at 2223 Whiskey Road from General Business GB to Plan Commercial PC. By title in the ordinance, submitting the zoning of real estate located at 2223 Whiskey Road from General Business GB to Plan Commercial PC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jericho. Is there a second? All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting rezoning of, from General Business to Plan Commercial. An approval of a concept plan for approximately forty-two hundredths of an acre of a parcel at 2223 Whiskey Road. Former location of a Checkers Drive-Thru Restaurant. Concept plan approval would construct a Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru on the parcel. The applicant proposes to remove the existing building and redevelop the lot. Since it is a planned commercial zone application, this requires a concept plan to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and approved by city council. Council has complete discretion over the concept plan. The property fronts on the west side of Whiskey Road to the north is developed as a drive-thru restaurant, the property to the north. The property to the south, across an access drive, is being developed as a sit-in restaurant. Both of these are zoned plan commercial. To the west, we have some unincorporated property across Whiskey Road, as well as on the east side. Across Whiskey Road, the, to the west is a fronting mura near Dougherty Road. The concept plan will show that the building will be about 668 square feet. Demolished with a 664-square-foot new building constructed that will be drive-thru only with no seating inside or outside. Since the city's parking requirements are based on seating or number of seats, no parking is required. However, the concept plan does call for seven spaces, including one handicap space. And existing access will be maintained with ride-in, ride-out only driveway on Whiskey Road and an access drive on the south side of the development, which will provide access to the East Gate Shopping Center. We do have some concerns about the drive-thru queuing. And when we get to the conditions, we'll go over that. The site must comply with our open landscape, open space and landscaping requirements in our zoning ordinance. At this time, it is not anticipated that a traffic study will be required. And two freestanding signs and two mounted signs are proposed in the concept plan. It is a project within the Whiskey Road overlay, which will require the installation of sidewalks, street trees, and the installation of curb and gutter to close any ditches, or the developer can pay a fee in lieu of installation. The Planning Commission at their July 12th meeting unanimously met and unanimously recommended the approval of this application with the, with no conditions as it relates to the rezoning, but approval of the concept plan with the following conditions. I'll read into the record at first reading. First, that the parking will be provided as shown on the concept plan. Second, that a shared access agreement and deed of easement should be provided to confirm driveway access and use of the dumpster. Additionally, if needed, the dumpster area should be upgraded to comply with the current screening and landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. The city reserves the right to have the developer revisit the drive-thru through the queuing on the site. Should line backups start occurring on Whiskey Road or the shopping center driveway. Number four, that the site and landscape plan comply with the open space requirements of the zoning ordinance. Five, that the development complies with the landscape and tree protection requirements of the zoning ordinance. Six, that a, the developer submit a trip generation memo to document the estimated trip generation for the past land use with a fast food with drive-thru and what trip generation that current plan will generate. They should also document their plan for access and that there is no plan change to the existing access. Additionally, they should provide documentation that access has been coordinated and approval by the South Carolina Department of Transportation to remain unchanged. Number seven, there should be conditions that a waiver is granted to allow two freestanding monument signs. That one sign is reduced in height to eight feet and that the signs will be located in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Number eight, that the plan comply with the signage requirements of the zoning ordinance. Number nine, that the planning complies with the requirements of the Whiskey Road Overlay District, or a payment and fee in lieu of installation be submitted. Number ten, that a revised concept plan listing conditions of approval and any changes required by a city council be submitted within 180 days. Number eleven, that the applicant sign an agreement stating the conditions of approval within 180 days. This is before you for the first, for first reading. Do want to add also, our planning director had to, had an unexpected family emergency that she had to. So she's not with us tonight, but I believe we have, understand some representatives from the, from the project applicant.
Very good. Well, we'll open it up for public comment. If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Yep. My name is David Brandies. I'm representing the applicant. I'm a civil engineer from Columbia, South Carolina. Appreciate your time and the staff's time for us to work here. Scooter's Coffee started in 1998 in Nebraska. They have about 300 locations, mostly in the Midwest, and their goal is to open in 24 new states for the next few years. They've opened one in Indian Trail, North Carolina. Currently, we're working on projects in Sumter, two in Columbia, one in Anderson, and this one as well. So they've got their, their growth plan definitely includes South Carolina. Just, I just want to talk about two of the items on the, on the conditions. We're fine with all the conditions, by the way. No, no problem with all of them. We're fine with reducing the signs from 12-foot to eight-foot, not an issue with that. Traffic codes, we've done a little bit of look since we've talked with staff. Currently, the ITE codes for traffic generation for a coffee shop would generate about, in the morning, 21 movements. Just to give you a sense, a fast-food restaurant would produce 35. So this is 14 less movements than would have been allowed for the, for the Checkers. Now, some of those movements happen at different times, and we do recognize that. And we'll work with SC DOT and staff on making sure that we have that. Currently onsite, we have queuing for 18 cars, which is a significant queuing just on the Scooter's property. There's also additional space on the site plan that we don't claim for queuing that could also be used for that. And we have no problem with the condition that if queuing becomes a problem, that we'll readdress that with both SC DOT and staff. Because obviously Scooter's doesn't want a queuing problem because that impacts their business. So they're as interested as anyone to take a look at that. Agreements for redoing the dumpster are already underway with the other property owners. And as a condition of this was the cross-access, access agreements. We will definitely have those in place and will provide those to staff. So again, we're very comfortable with all of the conditions. We're hoping that redevelopment of the property would be beneficial for Aiken County. It's been vacant for a little while, so hopefully this is a, a good thing for you guys. We looked at keeping the existing building, but it just didn't quite fit, even though it's 688 square feet and we're going to 664. You'd say, well, that just seems like, why are you taking it down? Just sometimes the spacings don't work. And there are no internal sit-downs to our facility. So some of that space just became unusable. So with that, I don't know if there are any questions that you guys might have?
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
We did say a traffic study would be done.
Right now, working with SC DOT and staff, they said that a traffic study would not be required. But that we would present what's called a traffic memo that would have them look at the new counts from that memo. Either SC DOT or staff could say, that's not what we thought. He could ask for a traffic study. But at this point right now, it's not being asked for.
Okay. Would patrons be able to enter or exit East Gate?
Yeah, that, they would, yes.
Yes.
There, if you look at the, the plan.
You might want to pull, I know you can pull it up. I think it's a few.
Yeah, it's on page 47, Sarah, of the agenda. But yes, it would, there would be a drive that would allow them to ultimately get over to East Gate. They will not be able to turn left onto Whiskey at the, it's ride-in, ride-out. It, it'll be, that will be similar to the Taco Bell entering off of Dougherty. You can only go right in, right out there.
So they can, they can come out onto Whiskey and make a right though?
Yeah, off of East Gate, they would be able to. Or they could go to the drive, you know, the little drive just to the south of this property that goes into Grumpy's and where Olive Garden is gonna be. They could conceivably turn left onto Whiskey that way. But again, that's, depending on the time of day, that could be time-consuming. Um, but again, that's, uh, depending on the time of day, that could be time-consuming.
Thank you. My question is, the parking places are just for the employees, correct?
They're for the employees, but also there are some times when certain accommodations has to be made for people who, um, for whatever reason, there's order was mis- misdone or something happened. Uh, there might be a DoorDash or Uber Eats that comes in. So we certainly want to provide those, even though there's no in- inside seating.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We certainly open it up for any other comments. Any comments, questions from council? Okay, hearing none on this first reading of this ordinance. As council, uh, before says the first ring of the ordinance to rezone the property at two-two-three Whiskey Road. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number two-hundred new business, this is the first ring of an ordinance to amend the F Y twenty-twenty-two twenty-three budget to include A R P, A R P funds. By title and ordinance submitting the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. For the water and sewer funds, sewer distribution division. Is there a motion? All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We did, um, as we've previously noted, received, um, our final amount of ARPA funds, two million, a hundred fifty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars, uh, in June. And what we would like to recommend, um, because I know, uh, we have a, a fair amount of utility needs. Um, that we spend, uh, two million, eighty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-four of this on, uh, some sewer projects. I know we've got, uh, sewer project at Powder House, uh, um, road. Um, and also we're doing some sewer work, um, along the north side. Uh, with the, the bulk of this, uh, we would request that it be spent for that. Uh, our last round of ARPA funds, you may remember, we spent, uh, the bulk of it on a stormwater project, the Hitchcock Woods Stormwater Project. Uh, with the balance on our Business Coalition, uh, endeavor. This is, uh, allowable use of the ARPA funds, uh, with the balance, uh, recommended just being, um, kept aside for future, uh, use, um, under direction from council. Um, and, uh, if council were to approve this, it would require, it will require an amendment to the budget. And, um, this is, uh, what we are, um, asking for this evening is first reading, uh, for an amendment to the budget.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council?
There I have several questions.
Yes, ma'am. Is your mic engaged?
No, sir, it's not.
Uh, a few questions with the funds, uh, we, I think we used one point seven million dollars for Hitchcock Woods.
Yeah, that is, yes, ma'am, we used about one point seven million.
Um, the monies that we're using, uh, for this, uh, it's close to a hundred percent of, uh, to improve the infrastructure of which we need. Uh, all across our community. Uh, but, um, the, whether the, I'm, I'm inquiring as to whether this is being used for new subdivisions.
It, it is related to the proposed Powder House Connector Road that we've gotten, um, federal, some federal funding for, and we have one percent sales tax funds for. Um, and, um, we hope to have some state, uh, infrastructure bank funds as well.
Okay, how much is this costing us totally?
You're talking to the Powder House project? The Powder House project, uh, the road and the, uh, utility work is, uh, approximately thirty-seven, thirty-seven, thirty-eight million dollars.
And we're missing, what, what do we need to complete that?
We would need, um, let me do some quick math. We would need about twen- a little over twenty million dollars, uh, twenty-one million, uh, roughly. Um, for the balance, we were able to get eight million federal, seven million, one percent sales tax. Uh, we, uh, applied before we realized, before we, um, were fortunate to get the federal funds. We'd applied for twenty-eight million of, uh, state funds, did not get that. But, uh, they are going to be, um, uh, reviewing our application again since we have this extra match. As well as, um, um, the local match through one percent sales tax. So, um, and, and with the, uh, amount of federal, of funds that are flowing to the state for roadwork, uh, we're, um, we're more optimistic now than we were when we submitted our, and proposed our application to the board in July of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions, comments? Hearing, hearing none. Before says again, the first reading of the ordinance to amend the budget for the city of Aiken for fiscal year. Uh, to include the water and sewer funds, sewer distribution division. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down the agenda, item number three-hundred new business, this is the first ring of an ordinance approving development agreement with the South Company for Union Station and Union Street Southeast. By title and ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to enter into a development agreement with the South Company for the development of property located on Union Street Southeast, T P N one-two-one dash three-zero dash oh-four dash oh-one oh. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The South Company is developing, uh, approximately forty-two hundredths of an acre on Union Street, uh, for a development known as Union Station. Um, what we would, uh, do, and we've done, uh, similar type, um, agreements in the past is, um, we would, uh, we have determined that existing water and sewer lines in the area that's shown on the, uh, board, uh, behind the city clerk in, at your seat here would need to be replaced, um, for this, uh, to provide adequate service to the new development and the surrounding neighborhood. The South Company has offered to design permit and install the new infrastructure. The proposed development agreement would allow the city or permit the city to reimburse them a cost not to exceed a hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars upon acceptance of the work by D H E C. This is for the sewer line, uh, this is not for the individual service lines for the, um, individual units. That would be borne still by the, uh, developer, but this is for the, uh, balance of the, the work, uh, um, the main lines, the ser- uh, through, uh, Union and Cumberland and, and so forth. Um, so this development agreement would memorialize that and allow for the funds, um, uh, at the appropriate time. Um, and again, verification of any expenses paid would be provided, have to be provided by the developer prior to any reimbursement. And this is, uh, being a development agreement would require two readings of council and first reading is before you this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? I know our developers are here, so are there any comments or questions from council?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Walts.
Uh, just so I understand this correctly, this money will be given to them after, after this is built?
Yes, that is correct.
Correct.
That is, that is correct. It is not going to be given to them upfront. It'll only be once work is, uh, verified, um, and verification of expenses. And also D H E C has re- has looked at the system and, uh, recommended that it be accepted.
And then it becomes part of the city.
That is correct. It will become part of the city's infrastructure.
Thank you.
All right.
I have a question.
All right, Brian, you're not getting off that easy tonight.
Gosh.
Councilwoman.
What's the proposed square footage for these, um, units?
Individual units will range from twelve hundred and four square feet up to about fourteen eighty. Uh, mostly three-bedroom units.
Okay.
To two-bedroom units.
And they will be for rent, lease, sale?
Pure sale.
Okay, how much?
Uh, to be determined. Costs are, uh, all over the place.
It is.
Concrete's up, lumber's down.
Okay.
Uh, we would expect, I'm not going to speculate, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, when is construction planning to, or you be, you planning to begin construction?
We would like to get started this month.
Okay.
We're, um, s- about to have a final plat, which creates the individual lots and therefore we'd get permits to build.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I enjoy, I love your new space.
Thank you, Mr. South. Appreciate that.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Laverne Justice, I live at sixteen.
All right, Ms., Ms. Laverne, if you want to speak up here, that's, that's fine. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Laverne Justice, six-sixteenth Hampton Avenue. I know exactly where you're going to build. How many units will be built there? Six, how many?
Six.
Six?
Six.
All three bedrooms?
Uh, two, two bedrooms and then four three bedrooms.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment if you'd like.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I just want to tell Allison South and her husband that I think that, um, these units will be quite a, being that it's going to be detached. It's probably going to be very attractive to a lot of folks, uh, within our community, uh, so just want to share that with you.
Thank you. We, uh, try to steer clear of HOAs if possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're fortunate to have these as fee simple ownership. And that allowed, the reason we converted from a condominium format is, was due to the unpredictability of costs.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. South.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of this first reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Move down to section five, petitions and requests on our agenda. Item number one is approval of a resolution to provide water and sanitary sewer services to property located off Powder House Road. By title of resolution authorizing the provision of water and sanitary sewer utility services to property located off Powder House Road. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jared O. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting, uh, city and water service for a proposed hundred and seventy-one unit, single-family attached town home development. On thirty-four point three acres located off of Powder House Road. Uh, the developer will propose a hundred town homes to be built, four-bedroom town homes to be built on twenty-six foot wide and a hundred and ten foot deep lots. And seventy-one three-bedroom town homes on, uh, twenty feet wide by a hundred and ten foot deep lots. It'll be built on Watson property located off of Powder House Road. Um, currently it's not in the city, so we have a policy for provision of water and sanitary sewer access to unincorporated areas, which, uh, establishes the process and, uh, criteria and conditions for city services to development outside the city limits. The planning commission reviewed this at their July twelfth meeting and unanimously recommended the following, um, approval with the following conditions. First, that the agreement to annex the property as soon as it becomes contiguous be executed and recorded. That an executed agreement on the provision of city services listing conditions of approval be recorded within ninety days of approval by city council at the R M C office. Third, that the city engineer approve the design of the water and sewer services. Fourth, that the site and landscape plan comply with the city of Aiken tree preservation and landscape regulations, which includes a tree survey and trees and shrubbery between driveways. Fifth, that the site and landscape plan comply with the city of Aiken's open space requirements with at least fifty percent enhanced for passive or active recreation. Sixth, that the sign be no larger than thirty-two square feet with a maximum six feet of height in height and be a ground-mounted monument sign. Seventh, that the South Carolina Department of Transportation issue an encroachment permit and that any roadways be constructed or modified as necessary to comply with public safety concerns. And eight, that a traffic study is reviewed and approved by the South Carolina Department of Transportation and the city of Aiken Traffic Consultant. This resolution for services before you this evening. I do believe Mr. Lawrence, uh, Keith Lawrence, representing the applicant, is here this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Mr. Lawrence? Good evening.
Good evening. Keith Lawrence, I did want to mention, uh, same what we do with Sanctuary, we're going to have part of the contract that every buyer understands that they will be annexed in when that time comes. I know that was a concern we talked about before.
Right.
And I think you all have battled it in the past, and so we're going to actually be part of the covenants and also a part of every contract. It's a special stipulation that they understand that they're purchasing, knowing that this will be annexed into the city.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions from, from council?
I don't have any question for, um, Mr. Lawrence, but I have a question for
Yes, ma'am.
City manager.
Yep.
Um, the one hundred and seventy-one units for these townhouses, the infrastructure that we put in at thirty-eight million dollars that's going to cost us, that was part, that's part of the whole bucket of money, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
I mean, they'll be responsible, of course, for putting in, um, the service lines to the homes. But in terms of, uh, the mains, uh, yes, that is correct.
All right, just want to be clear.
All right, very good. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, before says approval of a resolution to provide water and sanitary sewer services to the property located off Powder House Road. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number two-hundred petitions and requests, this is an approval of a resolution to accept deed of dedication for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater systems for phase four, section ten-dash-B in Woodside. Uh, by title of resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication from, from Reserve at Hollow Creek LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jared O. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Uh, the applicant, or the, uh, Woodside, uh, the Reserve at Hollow Creek LLC at Woodside Development has requested that, uh, the city consider and accept a deed of dedication for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater systems, as well as related equipment and easements at, uh, phase four, section ten-dash-B in Woodside. And our engineering staff has reviewed this request and recommends acceptance of the deed of dedication.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Uh, before says approval of the resolution to accept a deed of dedication for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater for phase four, section ten-B in Woodside. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down petitions and requests, item number three. This is approval of a resolution to accept a deed of dedication for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater systems for True Cedar Way in Woodside. By title of resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication from True Cedar Way LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, sir. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Uh, the authorized representative for True Cedar Way LLC at Woodside has requested, uh, acceptance of a deed of dedication by the city for water, sanitary sewer and stormwater systems. Uh, in True Cedar Way in Woodside. Uh, our engineering staff has also reviewed this request and recommends that the city accept the deed of dedication.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Item number four-hundred petitions and requests is the adoption of Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department Master Plan Needs and Assessment. And I'm going to recognize staff, uh, first on this and then we'll take the motion.
Thank you. Um, you were, um, may, council may recall, we had, um, late last year and early this year, um, several meetings, work sessions with council. We had, um, public input sessions, uh, moderated and led by Dr. Bob Brookover, Clemson University. Uh, Department of Parks, Recreation and Tourism Management. Um, and he did present to council data and recommendations, uh, from the updated master plan, which I guess the, a copy was first distributed, um, back in January, I believe. Um, and I know we, uh, one of the things is we work towards our accreditation, uh, we need adoption of a strategic plan. And, um, I know we have staff here this evening that if there are any comments or questions, uh, we can we can elaborate and answer them. But it is, this adoption is for council's consideration this evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. With that, in way of explanation, I'll look for a motion at this time. Thank you, Councilman Walz. Is there a second? All right. Councilwoman Broll, appreciate that. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none. All those in favor, I'm sorry.
I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Two things I noticed that in all this tourism and parks thing was one, there was discussion of two or three small parks that need to be closed. Are we looking into that, or is that just paper? Either one.
Yeah. Sorry, Jessica, wherever you're comfortable. Ms. Campbell, good evening.
Good evening. We are still considering a park. I think we are hoping to get some renovations underway at Smith Hazel Park within this current budget year. And once we feel that we've got those parks to where they need to be, then we'll look at closing some that are within proximity that may not be utilized.
And then my other question was with the broad, broadband, broad water, whatever it is, I forget, with the bandwagon, tourism parks. Over and over again, I saw the point that we need to consolidate our tourism offices, one tourism office. Is that something you guys are looking at also?
Yes, we are looking at reorganization of our facilities with tourism and within the department and with, with some other partners in the community. So that, we really need the plan to be adopted so we can officially move forward with those conversations. But we, we've already got some internal conversations happening.
Okay, great.
And we've had some, very preliminary, high-level conversations with the county, as Jessica mentioned, I guess, and it was in the paper. But yes, this will allow us to kind of have, have some more in-depth conversations. And then there could be, I guess, the, at the elected official level potentially as well between the two bodies.
Thank you.
Are we free to say, Jessica, that we've brought on someone to help us with tourism?
Yes, and I think the tourism strategic plan is the next agenda item, so possibly.
Okay.
That's up ahead.
Perfect.
Let's cut out, babe.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
I always move faster than them.
That's good.
I drive fast.
That's good.
We are chief.
Don't say that. All right. Any other, any other questions or? Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so, and I'll allow that, but the questions are actually when I ask for comments from the audience. That's when, when, so by, by all means, but that's the time for it. Yes, ma'am.
Justice again. Which parks are they considering on a closing here, once they renovate some other parks?
Yeah, I don't know that they, they.
She announced it at another meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Justice.
The park mentioned in the needs assessment is specifically Hammond Williams Park, and that would be either maintaining it as green space as a passive park. There was a recommendation that we could sell property, but I think our intent right now is to have it as a passive green space.
Yeah.
Meaning no equipment, just, it would still be maybe some benches, but not, not playground.
Removal of the playground equipment.
Sure.
You want to state the locations, so Laverne will know.
And Hammond Williams is off Buford Street, and it's less than one mile away from Smith Hazel Park. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right, with that, all those in favor of the adoption of the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department Master Plan Needs Assessment, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to item number five, referred to earlier, the adoption of the tourism strategic plan. Is there a motion at this time?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Is there a second? All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do, would, we would like consideration of this. We did have these recommendations in the early spring for our tourism division, which would align our tourism brand, Visit Aiken with national industry standards as a DMO, a destination marketing organization. And this would require the approval of council for this plan. I also, at this time, would like to take a moment and recognize our new tourism manager, Eric Gordon. Eric started a week ago Monday, jumped right in and spoke at First Friday. And we're very fortunate to have Eric. He picked Aiken, moved here during the pandemic and has extensive tourism experience. And we're fortunate to have somebody of his caliber and background working for us.
Welcome, Eric.
All right. Very good. Very good. We have a, we have a motion and a second. This time I'll open it up for comments from the audience. All right. Comments from, or questions from council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of the tourism strategic plan, please raise your hand. Very good. That's unanimous. Mr. Gordon, welcome, welcome on board. Glad, glad to have you with the city. Yes, sir. Item number six-hundred petitions and requests is the acceptance of an FAA grant award for Aiken Regional Airport runway design project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. Councilwoman Price made the motion. Councilwoman Diggs made the second. Comments from staff?
Thank you. It wouldn't be a meeting without a grant award that Joy Lester spearheaded. But we do have a grant from the FAA, Federal Aviation Administration of, that will pay ninety percent of the cost to, for the design of a potential renovation and rehabilitation, excuse me, rehabilitation of our runway at our municipal airport, excuse me, our regional airport. The grant, the FAA funding share is two-hundred-ninety-eight thousand, eighty-two dollars. The state, the state will match five percent, sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty, as will the city, sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty. This grant, since it comes from the FAA, requires an approval by city council before we can accept the grant, and it is before you this evening.
Very good. Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Joy, we love to see these come, and thank you for what you do. All those in favor of acceptance of the FAA grant award for the Aiken Regional Airport runway design project, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous with Mr. Jared O. voting twice. He really didn't care for the minute, so. Anything for issues and updates under information, Mr. Beanbo?
The only thing I would like to point out is the, the artwork, the partnership we've got with Aiken Center for the Arts. And we've got some wonderful pieces on display, and it'll be rotating. We've got some here on the third floor and some on the first floor. The first floor, there are two different displays. One is artwork featuring scenes from Hoplins Gardens and Rye Patch. And that was put together through the efforts of staff working with the Friends of Hoplins and Rye Patch Board. And also the, with the Center for the Arts and Carolyn Gwynn. We have some wonderful artwork that is kind of a combination of therapeutic and artwork. These are individuals that are suffering from Alzheimer's and similar type conditions. For therapy and treatment, they paint. And some of those works are on display as well in the common area on the first floor. So we're very pleased to offer our building up for our, our space for these artworks, pieces of art.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. With that, I'd look for a motion for adjournment. All right. Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second? Councilwoman Broll, all those in favor, please stand up. We're adjourned.